Lots going on, so of course we have to have a curriculum committee. I don't doubt it's your week at three fifteen on Friday. I do apologize about the timing of that, something that was out of my control. But here we are, and I'm trying to get through the agenda. So we've got a call to order, and this is our curriculum committee meeting scheduled for three fifteen on August first. And, um, did I get everything? Oh, I might have taken yours. Nope, I did. Okay, you guys, all right. Can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Motion.
Second, all in favor, aye. You're gonna oppose, it passes. Can I have approval of the minutes?
That's a move.
All right, second. So we've got, uh, all ready, aye.
Ms. Hayman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Crossley, can I ask a question on the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. That we're talking about, you know, the testing that you did in May, and then they would come back in June. Do we know how many students in third grade have been retained for next year?
Anyone in there who have that data in front of you? I believe we went over those numbers.
Are you talking about based on the DIBLs?
Yeah.
Yeah, third grade teaching.
Uh huh.
I don't want to give that to you though. Because I don't want to tell you the wrong number. I know it was not nearly as many as you thought it would be.
Yeah.
But, uh, I don't want to give you a number that's not accurate, so I don't want to take that one.
Okay, so that, they're figuring that in in their classes by now?
Right, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crosser. All right, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Hearing them oppose, the motion carries. Okay, we're gonna dive right into new business. We're talking N I E T, which stands for what?
Okay.
National Institute for Excellence Teaching.
Thank you.
And the, um, through the Super App, L D O E, allocate, and redesign dollars, money for C I R, U I R schools that must be used for those schools.
Can you, um, just spell out, or like, not just give me the acronyms, say what things are? Trying to.
What acronym does it?
C I R and the next one.
Oh, oh.
I know that's your normal speed, but it's just for anybody tuning in.
It's an intervention required for those schools. And, I'm sorry. Right, right.
Okay.
And those, with all schools, they allocate funding in which we must use with all particular groups to provide support. And they are only limited, you know, of builders that the L D O E has approved for us to be able to use those funds. And the N I E T is the one that we have been working with for the last four years. And so this again is just a little update of giving the state has already allocated those funds. We just need to, uh, use them. And as you can see, it's actually offered eighteen onsite coaching support days. And the way that it's broken up is three. She does, uh, three support days for following campuses, Burgeon, Madison, Royal Hill, and Carrollville. And then we do one point five support days for the following campuses, which is Cypress Point, Jefferson, Martin Luther King. And the way we determine the three days and the one point five support days is based on that, and typical of that.
Okay. And so what has, uh, so the data in terms of previous year of using this has been, have we seen some positive movement on that?
Yes, we have, uh, the N I E T, we try to keep, I don't think it changed any of the campuses that they were working with this year. The, uh, record, the consultant comes in, she works with the leadership teams on these campuses, and she works with the professional learning, uh, teams. They do focus walkthroughs with the principals and the leadership team, and provide support on what classroom instructs, how to strengthen classroom instructional effort. As you well know, our district's solidly, uh, involved this year with the three point block that's state-recognized. And I think all but one of these campuses listed, uh, is pretty difficult.
Right, okay, fantastic. Do we, at the end of the year, do we survey the individuals who are recipients of this programming, just to see what they think about it? And any suggestions?
We do, and the, and the company also, they do a mid-year, um, sit down with this board, my fellow attendants, to give us feedback. First of all, every visit they do with the school, we give feedback, or feedback report. Um, our district staff actually goes into the school with the consent. And so we get a summary report of every coaching visit that they do. And then we also have a visit mid-year to look at where we are, and we have an end-of-year, um, wrap-up session to summarize the work that they've done throughout schools.
Got it. Any questions, we start with Ms. Derrick?
No.
Okay, Ms. Cooper?
Yes, uh, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
What was the specific criteria used to select these campuses?
The schools, test that. First of all, they have to be the comprehensive individual required campuses. The state labels those campuses as C I R campuses. And so those are the only campuses that receive this support with this funding. And so the state identifies them as C I R.
Gotcha, right.
Now how we, what I was, what we determine who gets the three days of support, who gets the one point five days, we look at the data and prioritize our schools. We tier the schools, and that's how we determine who gives what amount of time. Yes, yes ma'am.
Hold on one second.
Oh, no.
Just one moment, sorry, that's okay. Who, where are the funds coming for, for, for this? Did you say it comes from the state?
Super, the Super App. Within the Super App, we design, also allocate funding.
Okay, I mean, it just seems like, did you say it's eighteen hours, or is eighteen onsite?
Coach, eighteen onsite coaching visits. And what they do is they use a split open to half-day, so they are in our schools all year long. Because what we put out a calendar, and principals get to select out of their calendar when is most appropriate or best time for them to come in and be a coach. And that is from August until May, they are working with our sense of school issues.
It's only eighteen days. How is this spread throughout the year?
It's eighteen days, you think about a half-day, or a half-day does.
Yeah.
So if I'm on your campus, a half-day, then I'm on your campus from eight to twelve. But instead of eighteen days, that's gonna be like thirty-six days though.
But that's not, I'm just thinking about when we retire, and this seems like a great racket to get into. Because you're thinking about the dollars for, six half-days sounds amazing. Okay, I, I mean, you know, I know that's a good service, but it's just.
But my thing is just, when the state allocates this money, and we're just getting where you got it. You know, we love to do what we want, but they kind of show us what you gotta do to do it.
Right, right, no, I understand, and that's not a reflection of what y'all bring into me, that's just to say, wow, that's, that's a lot of money for, for thirty-six half-days. But it is what it is, and it's a renewal, so I, you know, I hope, Ms. Crosser, if I'm not wrong.
Well, I was gonna ask, I know that, that at least Neville Junior had it this year, or last year.
Yeah.
Not with this money, because they're not a C I R school, they work on.
Now, I didn't say, but they have N I E T. And this, so this money is a still part of the.
Neville Junior had N I E T?
Uh huh.
When, it's not a consultant company into Neville Junior, not an N I E T consultant. And when you say N I E T, are you talking about, you know, the new rubric that we're using was developed through N I E T? So we've had training, all schools have had training with N I E T, with that, yeah, but this is something different.
Neville Junior was part of that.
It was, right, okay.
But not this.
So this is strictly, and I understand C I R, U I R, I understand all that. So the money that you're saying comes out of this, but you know, when you say Super App, that is our total title, right? Okay?
But then Super App though, they have redesigned.
I understand. I, I downloaded all the things that they have sent to us.
Yes ma'am.
You know, this district, so I'm well aware of that.
Yes ma'am.
So, do we not have any children though, like at Salleyumple or Lexington that are alone, performing?
Of course.
That, I, I mean, of course. So we'll just use other money for that?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, we'll send you this money.
Well, I, I do agree with, uh, Ms. Hayman, this is a lot of money for that few days. And, and we, we just want to make sure that our teachers, are we pulling them out of class to do this? No, they just go and visit the class, observe?
Right, right. And they work with the, in, within the schools instructional leadership time, and their professional learning, probably many times, which is time when teachers are already coming out to do their professional learning. So it's not pulling them out of class, that's kind of already built into their master's schedule.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crosser, and it's, it's nice, obviously, we see gains, um, from these services. So I'd like to recommend that we, um, propose the renewal to, to the Board for approval.
Sure.
Am I allowed to make a motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, N I E T.
Now, second that, all in favor, aye. Hearing them oppose, that will move forward to, uh, Board for full approval for that renewal. All right, thank you, Ms. Crosser. We'll move on to Renaissance Star Reading Math, and this is also a vendor that we have, how long have we had this vendor? It's like, it's been a minute? Ten years?
We've had Renaissance for, long time since its inception.
Carmel Hill.
Carmel Hill.
Carmel Hill's thirty years, and it would like to do.
So is this a renewal that happens every year?
We, Carmel Hill pick up this cost. And we, Carmel Hill is no more than now with this true. If we want to continue this, which we would like to continue, this Star Reading and Math, because this is our school, you know, you have to choose which one you want. This is how we do our student, student system renewal. And so this is a, it's a, it's a.
It's such a user-friendly program too. I'm so sorry to interrupt, just as a parent, you know, being able to get up and keep track of what's going on, and seeing those assessments beginning here and there. You write, these are the ones I give both, both times a year, ah, they're so, so useful, okay, I'll be back much later.
We've been blessed, we've been blessed over there with Carmel Hill.
No, Carmel, I tried, you know, I wrote, I wrote letters, I wrote letters to the president of the company. I was like, you guys have got to do studies on us, don't go somewhere, anyway, I tried, I tried.
You did.
Okay, now, any questions? Does anybody have questions about Renaissance, Ms. Cooper?
Yes, uh, Ms. Anderson, I noticed it said that the STAR assessments at least three times a year.
At least three times?
Yes. Are we pushing for more?
We do, we do. But the company recommends three, but in all of our schools, we're doing more. And if we find people, yeah.
May I speak? I'm sorry, Ms. Cooper. Um, our school site, Salleyumple, um, when we look at students, um, students that are struggling learners, we progress monitoring them using this platform on a, um, monthly and sometimes bi-monthly basis, um, that we can track them and really keep, instead of doing it at the end of each nine weeks, or, um, a lot of times, um, they, you know, suggest back to school December, and then the end of the year. We do it multiple times throughout the year, because we're constantly evaluating and seeing where the students are, so that we can adjust what type of interventions they need.
Um, are the other elementaries, is this just for elementary? Oh, what grade is this, I'm sorry, I'm sure it's on. Is that up through six?
No, it's not.
It was all the way up, oh, okay. Um, so, uh, just my, my parental experience is very heavily in these options. So I'm sure it's beyond that, but, um, in terms, in my experiences with a couple of schools that were mentioned, but are other schools across the district using it to a certain extent? Um, that, I mean, is it equal use at all of our schools, is what I'm asking?
Of course.
Okay, all right. Um, and that, so the assessment, not, I'm trying to think, because what else does Renaissance do? I know I use it because it also keeps track of like the reading.
A R.
Yeah.
It's not A R.
It's not A R, this is just the test. Gotcha, okay, all right, thank you for that clarification, Ms. Cooper.
Yeah, uh, under purpose, Ms. Anderson, it made reference that implementation of STAR assessments allow for an additional data point when determining or monitoring students' academic process.
Yes ma'am.
What are they really referring to there, additional?
It's just saying, we, there are a lot of things that we use to determine where our students are, DIBLs being a major one in the case of, but STAR also gives us another data point. So just, just like when, always, you know, your teachers, the example, when you go to the doctor's office, they take a lot of data points. They take your temperature, they take your blood pressure, they do all of that, so they can use that to analyze what's going on with you. So this is another data point, just like their temperature that they take. DIBLs, it's like their blood pressure that they take, so we can see where that student is, and what we need to do to provide the extra support.
So DIBLs is the data point?
DIBLs, DIBLs are also, we get a data point from there.
All right. All right, any other questions, Ms. Crosser?
Well, is every school using it with fidelity, or I guess?
Now they are.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah.
And the minimum is, is, is the beginning of the year, end of the year, and end of the year, but we are, we are, we're, our team's gonna exit and job, ensuring that that's happening throughout our district, and the results that we got in this past year accrue.
Yeah, and, and use it with fidelity once you type tests.
With their school, school improvement plan, they have to report where they are with their STAR systems, and we monitor that, and we meet with them regularly as to that data, and whether it's moving in the right direction.
Thank you. And let me just add to that, as a parent, I get automatic reports sent to me in my inbox that give me that, and I can, I can go back and look at my, my child's score when they took it, where they're at now. And it gives you a very easy follow-up breakdown of what the information needs, how, how it compares to, I think, is it national? National is what it compares to. Um, and it really gives me a sense of, you know, is, has he gone back, has he improved? And I say he, because he's the younger one, so that's the one I get more often now, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's so user-friendly in terms of parental information, if the parent wants it. But then it's good for, obviously, the teachers are getting that too. So I know I have found it to be very useful, and I actually talk to my child about like, oh, I have true scores, and you know, so we've got that conversation.
Just, just a quick question, are most of our parents, or all of our, are they aware of this? Yeah, you know, and whether they use it or not, I understand, but.
And that's what it comes down to, it really comes down to the parent utilization of it, and that's why when we did our, our tours with our team, and we went to our underperforming areas, and those are some of the things that we share with those, and we just educate them on utilization of these programs, and how they'll benefit our kids.
And to me, I compare it to like the A C T elementary, and it really is just giving you a sense of where there's more. Yes, yeah, I think it's very useful.
Well, yeah, very good, uh, I like making a motion that we could do Renaissance STAR, we're using that, we're doing that.
Okay, I will second that, and we'll send it to the Board for future approval, all in favor, aye. Hearing them oppose, we will pass that on to the Board for approval. Uh, next, we're moving on to Hester Consulting.
Um, Hester Consulting is a consulting agency that we have used in the past, we've all stored it, but this is a little different. One of the initiatives that, um, Mr. Moore spoke of when he first, um, came, uh, for the city was that he wanted to initiate a leadership academy. And what better time to initiate a leadership academy than now? Because if you look around our district, we have, uh, most of our principals are zero to three years. And so, leadership development is a must in our district right now. And so, uh, in the spring, as a matter of fact, I can't remember when, I think it was our April principals meeting, we had, uh, Dr. Mixon to come in from U L M, and he worked under the umbrella of Hester Consulting, and he will be doing the majority of this work that you see outlined in, um, this proposal. Um, along, Dr. Hester will be kind of behind the scenes, help to facilitate, but Dr. Mixon will be doing the majority of the work. The principals loved him. I have, um, Mrs. Ivernato here, and at that time, Ms. McCarty was sitting in the principal's chair, and they can tell you the presentation and the work he did with them during that principal's meeting was powerful. But, um, many of them came to us after the meeting and said, we need him to come back, we'd like to do more work with him. So that's what this proposal was outlining, that work that you can see is, is spread out through the year, and working with our students, I mean, our principals, just to make them stronger, better principals, because they must say they're, most of them are friendly. Yes, ma'am.
That nurse, that brought her during the school day?
Yes ma'am.
Have you ever considered including aspiring principals in this? That may be, if, if Mr. Moore.
I'm glad, since you mentioned aspiring principals, we are starting a, a aspiring principals academy this year as well, that we're doing, uh, with the district. Because as you can see, look around our district leadership team, many of us are former principals, and so we're developing that, and this is possible, we're spinning off of that, but we're developing that in-house. And some things, some things, we, we recognize we can do ourselves, and so the aspiring's won't, that we feel we can do ourselves, and you know, we have a lot of new principals. And it's, when you look around the district, we, we always talk about who's next, who's next up, so if that's something we want, we're gonna get our pipeline back to develop.
Oh, so Mr. Bryant, you're trying to steal our funding, but that's common. That's pretty good.
Jackie, they were at a workshop, uh, I mean, a conference, uh, early part of the week, and they use high-nosage tutoring off of the team.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a part of this?
No, not part of this.
Okay, no, okay.
We do have high doses too.
This is a leadership, yeah.
It's a leadership.
All right. Okay, so this is a, it's a six, six-day leadership academy?
It's big.
It's spread out, okay.
It's spread out, it's spread out.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, and so you, who are, who is included? So it's principals and vice principals, what, who's included in this?
It, it will start with just our principal, because when you look at our nineteen of our schools, the majority of our principals are within that first year or second year. So that's a heavy lift, to get that group where they need to be. So our role is to eventually bring, bring in, if I just will just say, within five years, we're gonna bring in more people. We would have to put a lot of work into our principals, and, um, stay in those chairs, and we.
So I would, I would like to make an ask, um, because I really, I do believe that the role of the assistant principal and the role of our athletic directors is such in terms of their leadership on those campuses, that they should be included too. I know, we received a letter recently highlighting the issues that we've had, Carol was coaching history there, some problems there. And while it's a different type of leadership, just looking overview at some of the, the things that they're gonna be teaching, um, those would be very valuable. I mean, if it's, if it's a session on, you know, how to do a school budget, then yeah, no, they don't need to be at that. But if we're talking about, you know, how to be an effective leader, how to motivate students, those kinds of things, I, I would like to see our district be on board. And if you have one leader, one of the traits, in theory, it can trickle down to the others, but if they're not sitting in the same room, learning the same thing, um, that leaves that, that leader isolated and alone in the knowledge that they have, I, I would like to see a team of leaders at each campus. So, I mean, I, can I, can I pick on a couple of the principals? And you have more experience here, looking at, um.
Yeah, I, but it's not how I did this, but we're doing it, because that's one of the other things that we started, um, when I came on board in January, we start, we have monthly A P and original coordinate meetings. So we meet with the principals, and they get this new learning, and we also meet with the assistant principals to recruit them, and they get new learning as well, so that they can both go back to the building and be.
So, but why not include those leaders in the same room at the same time with us?
Because what we found, you won't speak to it?
No, go ahead, I'm gonna agree with you.
Go ahead, because what we found was when we brought principals and assistant principals in together, principals did not engage fully, because they were relying on A P to give the information for them. When we bring principals in alone, they have to engage, and because they, they gotta take this back as well. They're not, they're not so sure that the A P's are gonna be the same exact thing, so you've got to be more attentive. Another thing we found, as a school leader, if I'm, I'm more vulnerable to what I don't know, if I don't have my A P sitting here, see that I don't know. So what we found is principals are open to say, hey, can you go back over there, I really don't understand that. But they, they weren't open to do that with their A P or original coordinate.
You want that assistant to know.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's very, very helpful, and this is for y'all, I mean, I appreciate some, thank you.
What's your point?
Thank you, no, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that you are investing in leadership in other capacities, just in a different way. That makes sense, I, I, I feel like in theory, my idea makes sense, but hearing that, that just seems like that theory is not.
And I would like to receive information too, please, for a second.
That is, okay, I get it, thank you.
To, to, yeah, cross there, so, you know.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Ms. Crosser.
Well, I just wanted to, um, ask, is it possible for us to get a copy of this, is it five-one model?
Yeah.
Is that, and, 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 you understand what that is?
It's a turnaround.
It's a turnaround model, school turnaround model, but.
Okay, I, I tried, I'm glad that I couldn't find it.
Both Dr. Hester and Dr. Mixon have, um, extensive experience in turnaround school, and they've both been turnaround principals, and they've also worked with schools all across the country in their turnaround efforts, so they come to us with expertise in this. But that model, um, she actually, in our sessions this week, came in and just kind of gave principals an overview of what that model looks like, just so that they would be aware of, just whether she comes back in or not, she shared that with us.
Yeah, and will we, at the end of this, when they, when we have an evaluation from the principals that, that we can see, like with any of the programs that we have, we never see the data or what the comments are. Is this program, was it successful, did you think it was worthwhile, did we reach our goals? I think that's most important, and, and just remember that it says January twenty-five, that's gonna be January twenty-sixth against.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
I just wanted to ask, Jackie, uh, I'm familiar with Francis Hester, how long has Mixon been with her? Um, he's been with her a whole while.
Now, he's been doing work with her in Texas and in other areas, he's just not long ago come to U L M, and he's working, so maybe they've been doing a little more work together here in this area, but maybe been working together for years.
All in favor, aye. Hearing them oppose, that motion carries, we pass the Board for approval. Okay, we're moving on to Renaissance D N A. All right, so I was gonna need to differentiate between the Renaissance STAR.
Okay, anybody want to do a final?
I'm gonna let you go.
So Renaissance, the first one, was STAR Reading and STAR Math, which is, uh, is a system that we used to gauge student progress, student learning, it's kind of a data point. Renaissance D N A is when we were used to put tests, so all of our assessments were going to Renaissance D N A. We actually began utilizing this under the previous Chief Officer, so we're white, uh, and we're just renewing that contract, but we are adding some additional assessment items, because as the standards have changed, the units for E L A four thousand have changed, Renaissance has a separate, um, portal, for more advanced questions that we want to use, because their assessment, the company that we previously used for assessments is going out of the system.
Wait, who's from your department?
It's, uh, as it lasted, but it changed the fair assessment, it's a name, but they're going out of the system.
Oh.
So we want to be ahead of it, and we don't want to look up, and we don't have any district assessment, it's because they're going out of system, we thought like, yeah.
Cool, smart. Okay, so tell me what, I mean, this is, uh, kind of vague in terms of the services offered, tell me what benefits the district is gonna get, um, from this program.
So we have shared data points, so if you take a test that, um, Salleyumple, somebody else is, they're gonna all take the same test, Salleyumple, Madison, Jersey, Boston, Royal Hill, Sheldon, Thomas, Jefferson, so we can now look at the district instructional team, we can see every kid in the district answering the same questions that are standard a lot. Um, so there's no water, it's down, this is specific to the state, so we can actually have a good picture of the students' progress.
So for what grades and what subjects?
Um, all subjects and K through two.
So how does that align with the curriculum within those subjects?
That's what that second one is for, the one that's thirty, thirty-nine dollars, and just actually all of our content, subjects, all in there, so.
Are you talking about the D N A software license?
So that's gonna give us that, um, additional material, so that way everything is aligned, so all you do is click social studies, you'll click fifth grade, and it'll pop up every year.
There are those assistant items along with the, so teachers can go in and create their assistance log, going to this platform, including, uh, assistant items that they know are all in it to be, to be.
Okay, I'm sorry for being dense about this, I'm trying to understand, because I, you know, we've approved a bunch of different. Because, you know, we've approved a bunch of different curriculum for different subjects, right? And so that's what you're saying to the software polls from those curriculum, it's into this to spit out what they need?
For the standards.
For the standards.
Where you look, oh, so the curriculum...
The one that has the test, right?
Okay.
But we might not want to give that exact test. We might want to see the kids master that standard.
Gotcha, okay, I see, I see.
Taking it a step beyond the stop sign, just knowing you have that shape and what it means, but actually they're even reading the word stop, it was on the stop sign on these stuff.
Okay.
So now we're not making them read the stop sign.
So then we get difficult. So basically, the curriculum is for anybody in the United States and wherever who wants five's curriculum, but Louisiana has certain state standards that are committed. So this allows the teacher to pull from the curriculum aligned with the standards to test on the curriculum.
Correct, we're paying like a...
Quick.
That's exactly true. That was a hundred percent.
That's true.
Thank you. I forgot, it was not for students, but...
No, everybody's right. But I'm like also adding, so we're moving towards, she alluded to it a little bit, um, you know, assessments where we are sure students have an assessment that is high quality and rigorous assessment. And through this platform and knowing that these assessment items are good and aligned, then we know that the data that we're getting, we're going to get a test for is true that, rather than a test that the teacher's pulling off, the teacher's crazy.
I got you. And this is a renewal, so this is not something we've done before. Nothing, this is a renewal for us. Um, and it's only taken them ten years on school, it's only taken me that long to finally understand.
As long as you get it, because I'm...
No, good, no, thank you for that explanation.
I'd like to make a motion to Renaissance, Spanish Renaissance, uh, P A.
Okay, for renewal report, I'll second, Ms. Cresser.
Just one question. Um, understand what are you going with this, okay? Let's say if you're in a GT class and that curriculum is more, you know, more involved, and how do they address?
The standard won't change regardless of the, the standard won't change regardless of whether you're gifted honors, on level, or special education. The standard is the same and we're trying to make sure that, uh, you are mastering or advancing in this standard.
Right.
Because the LEED test on standards, not what your class requires.
Next question.
Makes sense? I understand, I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand. I'll stay on.
All right, um, motion's been made in second and all fair.
Aye.
Aye, and hearing them opposed, that will be passed to board for renewal approval. All right, moving on to Gallipody.
Gallipody.
Gallipody. And we also, we have, uh, Miss Seminola, the principal of Saliano. And we also have a teacher that's been with us from her days at Louisiana Tech when she came with us. And she stuck with the district and she loves the district. We're going to let that come.
Let's hear she talk, aye.
Did she? Oh, wow, okay, so I'm going to have them come up and support Gallipody. Um, I did want to talk really quickly from the district standpoint. The material was amazing and also will be saved in the district if we go there. About seventy-three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
Wait, did she say it's saving the district?
Yes, no.
I love that, you know.
Yes. Hey, you know, I'm, I'm a family of my own shop.
I love to stop her with that point. Ms. Bryant, we're going to let them present first.
It's not only going to save this money, but it's so much greater than what we have now. It is amazing. I'm sorry, I'm in eighth grade social studies teacher at Saliano, Seminola's my principal. And I...
Would you step up to the microphone?
Yes, sorry. Uh, I was in Galapagos in, in, in March.
Push the button, you said, oh?
It is, it's on, no, it's on.
Did it lean closer?
Oh, yeah, okay. Maybe it wasn't on the phone. Um, sorry, there's, off spoken. Um, so I looked into Gallipody back in March. I've never been to the teacher leader meetings about it, but when I looked online and I used just their demos, I was blown away. The, um, to see it over here, and she brought in the actual textbooks, and I would love to just sit there and go through the textbooks. These provide, um, the biggest thing for them is that they want to do small bites of information. And then we would regroup with the students, okay, let's answer a few questions about the two, maybe four, just chapters, any paragraphs that be read. And so after we go through a few paragraphs and we answer those questions, we're not just flooding them with too much information at one time. And what I really like is, for me, I teach a lot about the ancient world now, and it's very abstract because some students, if you say woolly mammoth, I have to throw back the movie of Ice Age to kind of give them a picture. But I don't have to do that now because it's in the textbook. And the images, they're signed up, of course, I have to go to Google and make sure it's appropriate first, or videos, and try to sign things to pull the pieces to give them the picture, which with these textbooks, it's not needed. And so I'm able to teach and they can see it right then, and I don't have to need to find these pieces. And then the test, the test, it's so neat-like now, because I went to talk to Mr. Gray, he's Mr. Farmer, he's the national curriculum manager for Gallipody, and he gave me his sample again. And when I saw the test, it's, it's got the drag and drop, it's got where on the map, you have to click the bubbles, just like the LEED test, it is, it is everything. I did not find a single hole in it. It was amazing.
Okay, so what, again, this goes back to, based on the curriculum and the other things that we already have in place, why do we need this?
With this, to me, this is way better far as than Bayou Bridges. With Bayou Bridges, the textbooks we have, it's just we read the chapter and then I have to go in and answer a few questions. Our tests with Bayou Bridges have not source-based, they're question-based, can you spit it back out from the chapter? To where with Gallipody, it's can you use this data and then infer and comment the claim, can you make a counterclaim to your claim? It's, it's making them think so much further.
Okay, and what subjects are we talking about?
This will be kindergarten group, aye, right? And just keeping in mind for the board, we're going to have to buy, they're consumables regardless, we're going to have to buy, we have to buy this curriculum every year, whether we went with Gallipody or we continue to use Bayou Bridges.
Okay, so was Bayou Bridges up for renewal this year?
Yeah, it happened every year.
Every year?
Every year we're going to have this, wherever we're renewing something or, uh, changing. The difference with Gallipody also is that with social studies being so new, it's bringing standards, uh, I'm sure you remember, we had a lot of new teachers. This tells them, and I can give you all the books to kind of go through, do this, say this, group the kids here, let them work independently here. And then they also give you look forums. We, they didn't have books, they don't have look forums to use Bayou Bridges. There's nothing to tell you whether the kid got it right or not. Other, you know, like there's, there's no guidance, nothing.
This is one of the recommended curriculum from the state? And we didn't have any, actually. Wasn't that the only one?
It was the only one.
The only.
So now Gallipody, now let you see the other part of it that we really like, it's one book. So instead of the key, right now, truly, we keep, um, what we currently are, are using, it's one book for unit one, one book for unit two, it's seven units. So a teacher is going to have to have a box, boxes for seven different units. Seven different activity pages because the activity pages are not in the books.
Are you talking about Bayou Bridges?
Uh-huh, it's at fourteen boxes for the year. With this, it's a one-stop shop. If you turn, that's a screen copy, if you turn through this, you'll see the direct activity pages on there where the kids are writing in the book, and that's the one book for the whole year.
And they give us the digital and the paper?
And we have the digital and the paperwork.
Sorry, I just turned to a picture of a woman killing a man.
Okay.
No, she was... What's the universe trying to...
And if you, if you compare this to the unit title, it's the exact same unit material. Teachers are really invigorated about this.
Amazing.
They love it, they can...
Those are our teachers.
Well, you know, Ms. Pomry, the last, the last, same motion was?
Cornwell, no.
Corn...
Cornwell.
Cornwell, okay, thank you. I'm sure that was changing because of the real, I apologize. Um, I obviously trust you a lot, I think you did great things, uh, I know, um, in the classes that my children were in. I, you know, I'd like to see the excitement from that. The only thing that we have to do, however, and we need to make this available for parents to come in and take a look at.
Guess what? There's, there's even a parent section. So parents will now get a letter for...
But I mean, we have to have approval before the board approves. So we have to have, and that, what's the policy on that waiting period before we can approve a new curriculum? I don't believe it's thirty days. Yes.
Is this a new curriculum?
Yes, it's a new curriculum.
It's a new source.
It's a new source, yeah. So we, and you know, I mean, yeah, because people want to make sure there's nothing in there that's, we're not supposed to be teaching kids. So, uh, so we, we had a hiccup on this thirty days that we have to either suspend the policy. So we need to bring it before the board if, if that is the motion made by my, uh, committee member, uh, to, uh, request the suspension of policy, but allow, um, parents to look at that. And, I mean, the board may not approve this, but suspension of policies, so we have to wait thirty days.
Is there a way for me to present, like, our material we have now and compare to the Gallipody?
Yeah, I mean, so we will, we'll have a board meeting Tuesday at six. Um, and so if a committee member so chooses, we can, um, bring this up for a presentation. Um, and that does make it available. And if the board sees that it's, it's appropriate, uh, there is time, obviously, over the weekend before the meeting for interested community members, not just parents, it's interested community members to take a look at this, um, make sure everybody's okay with it, then the board could suspend that policy to approve because we don't want to start school with that. But we do need to do these things before school starts in the future. So keep that in mind, that we have to have at least before, the month before, any new curriculum that's going to be approved. Renewals are different, but new curriculum, we have to have it ahead of time.
So you're saying, uh, what are you saying? You're saying we have, this is a new curriculum, is that what it is?
Yeah.
And so we have a policy?
We have a policy that says that you have to have thirty days, uh, prior to voting, um, for community members to look over that curriculum to approve. That was a state law, wasn't it? Wasn't that why we had to pass that policy?
Even though it's still aligned to all the standards, just like Bayou Bridges is still not coming?
Yeah, so...
We have a book.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, I'll make motion to, uh, ask the board to suspend the thirty days to approve, um...
Gallipody.
Gallipody. Correct.
Okay, I'll second. Do we have any questions in the room, Professor?
Uh, no, the subject, but we have our social studies supervisor. That is you?
Yes, yes, well...
I thought it was the mistake. That's where...
No, no, not anymore. The state is in HR now.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Okay, any other questions on Gallipody? All right.
Well, I do, if, if you're going to, let's just talk about this, and I, and I really appreciate the fact that you recall that policy because some of us here work very hard, and I, I'm sure you can appreciate that in this day and time. It's, uh, parents won't be aware of the, the material that is going into the classroom. And this is a new curriculum, which will be, would be replacing, uh, the Bayou whatever.
Yes.
And, and, um, that was my question originally, the same, I was just totally confused because this time last year, you all adopted that program and it was implemented this year. And so when I saw this, I was just like, I couldn't put it together. But you all done a very good job of explaining what's going on here, and I fully understand. Uh, I would suggest, you know, that you try to make an opportunity, uh, there was a time when these materials that I see up here were placed out and some sort of notice was given to parents that they could come in and review this. Uh, I don't know what accommodations can be made at this length date because we are starting in two weeks, I understand that. At the same time, I think that you ought to offer an opportunity for parents to acquaint themselves with this new curriculum.
Thank you. I, you know, I think that, that's an important point. Um, you, you all may have the numbers, but the amount of parents that actually take time to come and go through curriculum prior to school starting is very small, very small. The amount of parents that take time to look at the curriculum during the school year while their kids are supposed to be working on it is also very small. So while I understand in theory what you're asking for makes sense, there's also a point where we have to trust the people we hire and the people who educate our children, and I will advocate for that on Tuesday as well, that it, it's all well and good to play politics with children's education. I am adamantly opposed to that when it comes to, we've got to educate our kids and we've got to trust the people who have gone to school to learn how to educate children, um, to be able to look at a curriculum, determine its effectiveness. I appreciate you bringing in, uh, a teacher who has practical knowledge and use of these, um, of, of the curriculum, of being in classroom teaching, I know you all have been there, but somebody who's actively doing it, who can say, well, and just to see the energy there is like, okay, well, obviously, this is a source I trust. So I just would encourage us, uh, now I'm pretty required here, but, um, for those of us who maybe online or anybody listening, I'll say this again on Tuesday, to while I understand the politics of wanting to look and make sure curriculum is accurate, we're not teaching people on gay or whatever it is that people think that we're doing in these schools, um, that we do trust our educators here and look at this curriculum. But we will make this available. I heard from Superintendent Moore, this will be available before Tuesday. Um, there's certainly, you said there's some online resources, so we can, um, put that on there, um, for people to look at. Because nobody's trying to hide anything, is what I'm saying. Nobody's trying to provide robust education, and I appreciate that. Although every time this comes up, I'm like, this is wrong, I need to understand, like, where are we at? What have we got? Why are we getting another one? I'm confused about that, but y'all explained it very well and adequately to me, so I appreciate that, as, as someone who's had kids in the system still too. Yes, Ms. Cresser?
Yes, and I appreciate your explaining. Please, in all fairness, we have had one program, one program, we keep changing and changing, and we have all listened to the teachers as well as parents about these programs. Have you, as social studies teacher, did you reach out? Have all of our social studies teachers are aware of this?
Yes, I have.
Of the change?
I spread it in my school before actually having a group.
Not your school, but the entire district?
Yes, ma'am, I conducted district level PD for third grade teachers, only fourth grade teachers would fit.
Sure. And that, that's just my first question, because, and understand where we've been and where we're going, okay? And, um, will they have to be, I would think as a teacher and a formal one, I can take that book and read it and learn how to, I don't have to have professional development.
However, is some pending, a pending order approval, we haven't got that in place. We got some field sites, so make sure that they do be a professional development.
They, they, they do get it. And, you know, that would be my only, now that we are not doing Bayou Bridges, one comment can, is that we don't always have to, to buy the program or do what the state department says, because we have visited with other districts who are just, they're just not doing it. So just keep that in mind, and if you, as the educators, don't think that this is good for us, then find another program.
Well, we also have to remember, we're, we're at the mercy of the state, the curriculums they're approving, and that's why I brought up that Bayou Bridges was the only one that we were allowed to teach until now. So now there's a better one, and that's why I'm...
But every time it didn't go to...
Hold on one second.
I, I'd just like to say something as an old person in this, been in this district a very long time, and I would not give my resume if this episode likes to say that too. However, Ms. Bryant and, uh, Ms. Cresser, we've been around a long time, and exactly what you're saying is absolutely true. There used to be a lot of textbook companies that were bringing all of these wonderful kits. A lot of those companies are now bankrupt because the states have gone from, um, less A lot of those companies are now bankrupt because the states have gone from less of a national standard to more localized state standards. And when they did that, they could not afford to keep up and do different textbooks for every single state and their particular standards. That's why we ended up with Bayou Bridges to start with. Because we knew if we were going to be able to teach our children the standards that the state was asking us to do, we had to use the only resource that we had. We did not love Bayou Bridges. We did not, you all did not love it. But it was better than, it was the only thing that was aligned to those standards. Now, Gallop has come along and said, you know what? We can take this and do it better. So this is the first time we've had something that was, that was better for our students and for our teachers in particular to help us teach those standards to our students.
How many options?
Because those days are just gone.
Okay. And so question going back to the Renaissance DNA that again is going to align with this because it, it looks like from what I'm seeing, not only are we getting the digital access for child, we're also getting physical, physical books.
Yes, ma'am.
So seven hundred and twenty kindergarten books are being provided and so on and so forth. And that's in relation to our population?
And that's shield, that's $30,000 a month.
Okay.
Matter of fact, do we have to buy this every year? All books right now are all consumable every year.
I do have a five-year contract.
Well, because they're workbooks, so the kids are writing.
They're work, oh, they're workbooks. But we don't have to print them, do we?
No.
No.
No, they just get, so they're gonna, each kid's gonna get one of these. This is a sixth grade book. And so, yeah, so it's read, so they can mark it up. I just, let me just put a plug in there. This better not be one of those books that comes home that the kids did this much of it. And I'm like, why did, why did our district pay for this book? And I've gotten this, this much empty.
If that were to happen, that means the teacher's not teaching. And that's right there. And that is every, you begin to see that every.
Let me just ask y'all, you might want to do spot checks every now and then on these curriculum logs. And literally just go pick up a kid's book randomly.
We do.
Scroll through them.
They should be able to tell you, the student should be able to tell you where we picked it up today.
I don't know. I got some of those books that come on my very own. So, okay, so we.
What do we, what do we?
Motion, okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor of I. Any votes, your non-motion carries? And the request from the committee is to suspend policy to adopt this curriculum as the new social studies curriculum for the year. Okay. And we will have to check with our board attorney just to be sure that we can do that. I, but I'm going to also ask that communication be sent out to the district today, sorry, informing the public that they, that a new curriculum is being considered for social studies. And here's a link where you can review the application. And if you want to look at the, if you want to look at the actual books, they come to Central Office and request to look at those. Can we do that?
And Ms. Hanglin and Mr. Moore, Ms. Caldwell put together kind of a snapshot of the program and the benefits. So we'd like to leave these extras for the other board members, so maybe they can review it before Tuesday night just to kind of look over it. She's kind of put together a little packet to.
Thank you very much. Ms. Robinson, can we, is that, can we upload that to Board Docs? What, what they got there in association with Gallop?
Uh, yes. Yes, I think I can add it to what you, yes.
Okay. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. No consulting or no out?
All right, Kedek, the idea representative, how this is supposed to do is to not be too deceptive about consulting. As all of you are aware, we're under new accountability with our, with our state and our schools. And the new accountability, once it's launched, it had three different categories, the growth component, the cheap component, the thrive component, where we're having to track you. We have talked about many of the data points today. We keep referring to data points and data points on it. Everything that we use has data points. Well, they're displaced, displaced, and displaced. But we need to have a centralized place where let's all come together. And what we found at this new accountability, where we're worried about school performance scores, sometimes we forget about the children. And we forget about our students and how, you know, we need to make sure that this accountability impacts every single student. And how do we see that? Well, we're doing that by looking to see, are they growing? We spend a lot of time worrying about whether they need to master or not. Every student, unfortunately, may or may not get to mastery, but did they grow? Are they learning something? And we need to be able to track that. So what this is going to do, we have this consultant, her name is Kathy Noel, she's a Valley Noel consultant, who will come in and work with our leadership team. And we've been tracking data for a long time. But this is going to be a nice tracker that's going to be able to include every single student in our district. And we will be able to track them throughout that school year to see, are they progressing based on all of these data points that we've discussed today plus more? It will go all the way up through high school, where we'll be able to track students, whether they're on track for graduation, whether their ACT scores are up to par, work key scores, industry-based certifications. So it's going to cover all of the data that we look at on a daily basis and be able to look at those individual students. Because that's how we're going to grow this school. That's how we're going to be able to grow this district. It's being able to put all of that together. We'll be working, should be working, knowing our leadership team, that they will be able to take this tracker, this information down to our schools so that the accountability people, curriculum coordinators, will all be able to look at this data with a lump of their principles. And it will be a living document that will be able to be updated every time we put a data point in. It will be right there for us to track. And so she's going to come in and work with us. And we're going to be looking at goal setting because we can't tell if our kids are going to grow, you know, set a goal for them. Being able to put all this data together will help us see where our students need to get to. So it's going to be like a roadmap for them to find that. We're going to have training on the new accountability expectations, which will empower our staff to understand and act on the new components because there are different components for the different levels. The elementary and junior high will only have two components, either how whether they're on the test or how much do they grow. The high school, you have those two components plus the thrive component, which includes ACT, enrollment, AP, and a lot of other things. There's a whole, a whole lot of different data points. And so what it's going to do is going to help us also, some of the problems, some of our accountability being an only two replaces is that we don't always, we're not able to be able to collect every single piece that we need to collect. And this tracker will help us look and see, well, this particular child is missing an ACT score at least a twenty. Well, guess what? Maybe that child has never even taken an ACT yet. So that's going to help us look at that. When you look at him on this tracker, then we can say, well, we need to pull him in and figure out why he hasn't taken an ACT. We don't need to wait till he's about to graduate and realize he hasn't taken an ACT. And that's just a small example. So that's going to be beneficial, too, is these progress monitoring tests that we've been talking about. All of those will be data points and will be spread into the tracker as well. It allows us to be able to, allow us to see where they are at the beginning of the year, at midterm, end of the year, anytime we need to look at progress monitoring, which then makes charts more applicable. So it's just going to be, it's a plethora of data that we all put together into one slide. And she's going to come in and help us to figure out how we're going to use that and then push it down first, goes and be used on a daily basis. And the main thing is that error correction part, where we can see, a lot of times the data will come back to the state. And then maybe we found that something's been put into our system wrong. And we'll be able to catch it before it's too late, before it cuts into our high school performance score. There are very few errors, but we don't need heavy misses or to have to prevent that. And I think, other than that, I think that probably about all from this summary that I can surmise that might be a benefit to you, unless someone is saying to you anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayhall. I have a question about this, Mr. Superintendent. We, the board passed a couple of years back, a tracking system that was supposed to keep track of all the student performance, everything that they're doing, they're accomplishing. We approved that. It was quite expensive. Whatever happened to that? It was brought to us by Ms. White.
That was something we honored and retired, they left the state, and it never did pick up.
No, it was, it was not a person. I mean, it was.
It was, it was a river.
It was a river. It was a river.
So. We didn't pick up.
We approved it. I mean, it was, and it was, it was hefty, but this, the, the whole reason that we approved it was that it was basically what you're saying right now. And so I'm concerned about that. And I'm concerned that nobody knows what I'm talking about because the board did approve it. So I want, I need to know what happens, happened to that. And then the other side of it is, I need to know who's, who's actually going to be looking at this and who, who's going to be responsible for that. Because while that information is there, every single student in our district?
My list is tracking.
Right.
And then it's.
Yeah, every student.
And then each, each school have their own separate, she'll have access to all those. Then Ms. McCarty, she'll have access to the elementary ones, as will Ms. Robinson.
And she showed me the program, just a sample. And as, as a former principal, I'm going to tell you, that would have been a game changer. Because for me, if I wanted to look at a student, I had to go to the Google site. Then I had to go to the Star. Then I had to go to the T E U platform where they put in their grades. Then I had to go to the Google where they put in their progress monitoring. So that's four or five different platforms. And then trying to look, okay, where, or is all, are all the data points lining up? Or is there something that's arrived here?
So we don't have anything like this. So this is where I'm just confused because I, I distinctly recall approving this type of programming.
Was that, was that program at that time, was that an annual program that they can bring back?
No, that, you know, we're drawing.
And then the other thing she showed me, which is phenomenal, not only can the principal, but then the teacher will have their own students as well. So for a teacher, they have to go to five or six platforms to look at their student data. That's, that's a lot.
So this, but this contract says this for consulting, so this is consulting and the actual software programming?
Yes.
To make this happen?
Yes.
Okay. Because let me, let me just double check it because when I was looking at it, it just said the hours of consulting. It said twenty days of professional services. It doesn't say anything about any kind of software. And are we buying it? Are we renting it? Is this yearly renewal?
It's a yearly renewal. But all of that, all includes the end-to-end ACT component. We're dealing with the one. We had to be communicating with Noel Consulting and have all the information she would be the magazine.
I understand. What, and this will be up to the committee member if he wants to make a motion to pass this on. But what I would need to see to, to recommend or, or that motion would be, I would like to see what Ms. McCarty is talking about, kind of that visual, what, what is it that you guys are actually going to get? But also we need clarification on the, like I said, this just is a quote for twenty days of professional services. That's all you guys have put in front of us. So this isn't a tracking software at all that you put in front of us. So we would need to see that detail in the contract so that we understand what, what you're actually asking for. Because what you're talking about makes sense to me. What's in front of us is just a consulting program to teach you how to use something like that. But we don't have anything you're telling me like that. So is that, is that clear what I'm asking for?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So if we could get that, if you guys say yes, we're going to get that to the board? Because they're going to want to look at that for, for clarification of what the board.
Do you want to make that subject to those better information?
Yes. Yes, that we, we as a committee would recommend it as long as those details are provided.
So I would like to move forward with this subject to all the information that you called out, Ms. Robinson.
And I'll second that. And thank you for understanding. Again, I trust you guys and what you're telling me. But I also, we have to dot I's, cross T's, all those things, make sure that we're, and also make sure the district's protected. If we're paying somebody, we want to make sure we know what you're expecting to get. And we, and of course, all of these, Superintendent Moore, we want our attorney to look over all these contracts with board, board of commissioners coming up on Tuesday. So that's a lot for Mr. Lawrence to plug over, especially since he's not here. So we'll want to make sure that that's on the street, just to protect the district. And make sure you guys are getting what you are hoping to get.
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
Ms. McCarty talked about five different things they've put on the one. Would, according to the contract, would that labor be done by our IT people? Or does the company provide that for them?
Yes, see, then none of that's in the contract. That's the point. None of that is in this, what we have in front of us at this point. So they're going to get clarification on that. But that's a good detail that we need to ask. Okay, thank you.
It says creating proficiency exams for progress monitoring. Is that, are all these things that are listed here, is that what the lady will do? Or is she just going to in-service us in how to set up a program?
Are you looking at Noel Consulting?
Yeah. You know, it says creating data landing pages. I certainly understand that. And then, of course, but it doesn't say that who's going to enter into our system. Develop a tracking warehouse. Is that something different?
So, so basically what it's going to do is, it's basically like a huge spreadsheet. And so what's going to happen is you'll have all of your students listed there. And then you'll have a place for you to put all of your data points, whatever it happens to be. So at the high school, I can speak specifically to the high school, but I know it will work, that it works at the other levels. They just don't have as much data as the high school has. So what the high schools will do is they'll put in LEAP scores. They'll put in their ACT scores. They'll put in their work key scores. They'll put in, if they have dual enrollment credit. If they'll have AP credit, if they'll have CLEP credit, there's, if they're going to have an industry-based certification. So all of these things are going to be put on this spreadsheet. And it will tell us, because the new accountability, what it does is we used to get points, particular points for each student. Now what it does is giving us a percentage. So I need to know what percentage of my kids have at least a twenty on the ACT because that's the new standard. And so that will help us keep track of that. And so then we can look and see, well, how many of them do not? And I know specifically which of our kids at Neville doesn't have a twenty, at Carroll and at Washington. And then what I, what I'm going to do is the district, because I'm already doing this, but on a much smaller scale, on a tracker that's about, what, Mr. Moore, which you might be accountability person at Washington twenty years ago? So this, that we've been, that I have been using for the district for twenty years. This is an updating one that will include all of the data.
And that sounds good. Our question is, who's going to pull that together? The teacher's going to do it for a thousand students?
Well, it depends on what, it depends on what level of this. So if it's the teacher's tracker, then the individual teacher would put, but put their data in for themselves. If it's like at the high school level, what we have is people that are hired, that are accountability specialists, who it is their job to track this. And so they'll be able to put, to be able to put this in there. And they'll be able to put that data in there. The principal will have access to it. I will have access to Ms. Anderson, well, and Ms. Williams, because she'll be looking at her special education students. So we'll all have access to look at it. And then the teachers will be able to see who their bottom twenty-five percent are that they need to try to get to grow because the growth is a part of it as well. Because we need our students to grow. So you'll see where each individual student is. And then the students will have access to all of them.
Okay, so we've got a motion in the second, and I've got eight minutes to get through our last two items before I have to have another movement I have to get to. So all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing the votes. Motion carries so that will go to the board pending some additional information. So, and I, I did request Superintendent Moore to also look at what other potentials that were considered in tracking type programs like that. Okay, can we, can we take our last two together or does it have to be separate? All right, Great Minds, are these renewals?
Yes. Yes, a continuation of what we've already done in the past. And I will be doing both Eureka Math Square and implementation sides.
All right.
Currently, we are already receiving PD services for the science and the math program. This will just be an ongoing or a continuation of what we're already getting. We will have co, custom coaching PD sessions for certain schools. So the custom coaching will be determined based on where each school is as it relates to the implementation of the curriculum. Every school is not at the same starting part or ending as it relates to actually teaching the curriculum. So Great Minds, Eureka Math Square coach and the PhD science coach will come in, do learning walks in the school, and based on the observations that they get, they'll meet with the school leaders and come up with, hey, this is where we need to start coaching your particular teachers.
So this is, yeah, my question. So this is in addition to the existing Great Minds contract? No? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And so that contract didn't include?
No.
Coaching?
No.
It's just the curriculum?
Yes.
And this is, so why do we need coaching?
You need coaching because data tells us that the way the curriculum is being implemented right now is not effective. And the data, unfortunately for science, over the past few years, has been less than stellar. So we need this ongoing coaching so that our students can continue to show mastery. For science going forward, we will not receive any growth points. We will only receive points for students who score mastery. So we need the reps in our buildings to make sure that the teachers are implementing the curriculum effectively. And right now for science, there's only myself and Mr. Mayhall. I support the science case six starting January of last year, January of last year. And I'm only one person, and I can't get to all twelve elementary sciences.
All right.
Motion to approval.
Okay, I'll second. All right, Ms. Fletcher?
I need, again, this is more professional development for our teachers. May I ask, how many new math teachers do we have in the district?
I'm not certain of that number.
Okay. We know that Eureka Math, we've talked about even with Ms. Shana, nobody likes it. It's very difficult. And now are we doing Eureka Math? Are we paying for that? Plus Eureka Square? Or just Eureka Square?
Just Eureka Square.
I would have had to come back in because. I really had to come back in because of the problem. I just, you know, if, if, I would recommend that we bring all those math teachers together before do the, you know, a great in-service there quickly on PD instead of just hitting and missing. Because they've got to get that math right on.
What this, this is coaching where they're not coming into a room, sitting and getting and getting PD. These consultants go into that teacher's classroom. They work with that teacher as they actually are teaching the curriculum. So when they see those gaps and those things that the teachers need to strengthen, they work with the teachers, do that right in real time.
Custom coaching.
So it's not that they're coming into a PD session. These coaches are going into the classroom and working, handling the.
So my, my frame of reference for that is when we, we did reproductive health training, how the coaches do it, what we found was that the information given to kids is very different from person to person. So there's no fidelity in what people were actually being taught. It was not great. In our district, Superintendent Moore and I had a discussion about this. Our district made the first in-state step to having reproductive health taught with fidelity through certain, and then hiring like one or two individuals to do it at all schools. We can't do that, right? You have to have multiple teachers. So this is to really try to get folks to teach the curriculum with fidelity. So this teacher and this teacher and that teacher, and teaching that. So what we're proving here is to, the curriculum is there, is to teach fidelity. So that person who says, "I don't like, I don't like Great Minds. I don't want to teach that." Well, maybe you're, maybe you're not understanding. Maybe this is not how we're going to teach you how to teach it. Right? Y'all are good teachers.
So what I'm looking at, is it going to come in eight days? Throughout the school year, throughout the school year. How, are they going to be able to get to all of our math teachers in eight days?
No, they, they will not be at every math site. They will be at certain math sites based on data. I don't have those sites. I don't support math. I'm here studying for Mrs. Dillon.
Those where you're not seeing the progress.
Oh, absolutely. I'm not, I'm not seeing that. Because I thought eight days to get.
No, it's based on data.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor? I. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's the math supervisor?
Lisa Dillon. We all have another, like, both of us have another contract. Yeah, I'm, tonight I'm curriculum, I'm social studying. Then Tuesday I'll be.